I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Mike Stites.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th and February 1st, 2010?
So moved.
The motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Sang. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council. Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. Under Proclamations and Ceremonies, we have a Citizen Award by Chief Brennan.
If I could have Abel Cruz Martinez and Stephen McKean step forward. I have a Citizen Award to present tonight to Abel Cruz Martinez. On November 19th of 2009, while working at Amici's Restaurant, a coworker mentioned to Cruz that he had seen a black car parked behind the restaurant with the window rolled down, but he hadn't seen anybody inside. Some minutes later, Abel went outside to dispose of some refuse and noticed that the vehicle was still there. Abel Cruz took it upon himself to check that vehicle out. When he approached the vehicle, he observed that the vehicle was still running and that a male, Mr. Stephen McKean, was inside the vehicle leaning back in the middle of the front seat. Cruz attempted to rouse the man, but he was unresponsive. Cruz continued to attempt to awaken Stephen and realized he was having difficulty breathing. He then called 911. Cruz waited on scene until the officers arrived and flagged them down and then directed him to the black vehicle containing Stephen. The officer observed that the male, Stephen, was unresponsive and breathing shallowly. His eyes were open and he was sweaty. He appeared to be having a seizure. The ambulance arrived and Stephen was removed from the vehicle and transported to the hospital. It was later learned that Stephen was a severe diabetic who had experienced this problem numerous times in the past and was having a diabetic reaction. Cruz's actions in taking the initiative to check on the vehicle most likely saved Stephen's life. In this single act, he showed that he had the qualities highly recognized by the Wheat Ridge Police Department for citizen involvement and action when he could have easily ignored what he had seen. The department would like to take the opportunity to recognize Abel Cruz Martinez with a Citizen Award in the Wheat Ridge Police Department's ceremonial coin. Thank you.
I've been diabetic for 44 years and the ambulance people that attended really didn't know what was wrong with me because I was out. I've never been passed out like that before in 44 years. And they instructed me to maybe get, if it wasn't for Abel, I probably wouldn't be here tonight. But I now have a little bracelet that I didn't wear for 44 years. Luckily, we have people like Abel around that helped me. And I know Mike real well and I know Joey real well. And if it wasn't for me, I wouldn't get to go see Joey or Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that it's nothing to be recognized, you know. I wish someone one day come to me. I just want to do something that maybe one day I want to be in the same problem and someone come approach and do the same thing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight. I'll ask Mrs. Wheat Ridge to please read the proclamation and ask Marina Wilson to please step forward to accept. If Marina's here, say a few words, please. Please step forward to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheat Ridge. Good evening. Whereas pets provide companionship to more than 71 million households in the United States, and whereas humane societies and animal shelters have to put down more than 4 million cats, dogs, rabbits, and other animals each year, many of whom are healthy and adoptable due to a lack of critical resources and public awareness, and whereas this tragic overpopulation of pets costs citizens and taxpayers of this country millions of dollars annually through animal service programs aimed at coping with the millions of homeless animals, and whereas spaying and neutering has been shown to dramatically reduce the overpopulation of pets and feral cats, proving to be a wise investment in saving animal lives and taxpayer dollars, and whereas veterinarians, national and local animal protection organizations, and private citizens worked together to ensure the spaying or neutering of more than 38,000 pets and feral cats through Spay Day in 2009, and whereas veterinarians, national and local animal protection organizations, and private citizens have joined together again to advocate the spaying and neutering of pets and feral cats on Spay Day 2010. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Wheat Ridge that February 20th and 21st, 2010 is designated Spay Day 2010, City of Wheat Ridge, and call upon the citizens of Wheat Ridge to observe the day by having their own cats, dogs, and rabbits spayed or neutered, or by sponsoring the spaying or neutering of an animal in a shelter awaiting adoption.
Thank you. Please pull the mic up a little bit.
My name's Marina Wilson and I am a board of directors member for Spay Today, a nonprofit organization. We do spaying and neutering of dogs, cats, and rabbits. This is Dr. Pacoli. She's our chief veterinarian. Colorado Animal Shelter has euthanized around 40,000 healthy adoptable pets every year because there aren't enough homes. Most of this surplus is due to the birth of unplanned litters. Spaying and neutering is the only 100% effective way to deal with pet overpopulation. Our Spay Day event, Spay Up All Night, will help address this problem by providing very low-cost spay-neuter surgeries for up to 250 owned and feral cats. Spay Today and The Feline Fix sincerely thank the city of Wheat Ridge for recognizing the importance of this effort by signing the Spay Day proclamation. And I'll leave some information on the table back there if anybody's interested in signing their cat up or their neighbor's cat. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward if you have public comment on anything not on the agenda at the podium. So seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes tonight to the agenda? So the agenda will stand as published. Item one is the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are 10 items tonight on the consent agenda. Item 1A, motion to approve payments to Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency for 2010 Workers' Conversation Premium in the amount of $207,750 and 2010 Property Casualty Premium in the amount of $153,164. B, motion to approve the purchase of automatic license plate reader funded by the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $20,425. Item C, motion to encumber funds for the 2010 WR TV8 Videographer Services in the amount not to exceed $36,000. Excuse me. 1D, motion to encumber funds for the 2010 Connections News Leather Design and Print Services in the amount not to exceed $71,127.14. E, motion to approve the purchase of Audio-Visual System for the Police Chief's Conference Room funded by the Police Investigation Caesar Fund 17 in the amount of $16,264. F, motion to approve annual renewal for the Computer-Aided Dispatch and Records Management System in the amount of $71,307 to Logistics Systems Incorporated. G, motion to approve payment for the annual sales tax increment for the Town Center, Great Recycly, and Walgreens Projects in the amount of $277,482 to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority. H, Resolution 09, 2010, amending the fiscal year 2010 budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the reappropriation and reincumbrance of 2009 fiscal year encumbered funds in the amount of $1,724,011.96. I, Resolution 08, 2010, amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $12,533.40 for the renewal of the WR TV8 video streaming software. J, Resolution 10, 2010, amending the fiscal year 2009 open space budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $94,220 for the purpose of expending the Bah House grant. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve 1A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council. Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. Item two is Council Bill 02-2010. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number 02-2010, an ordinance amending a planned industrial development outline, development plan to allow an additional use for property located at approximately 5250 Oak Street, case number WZ-09-09, Arvada Fire Protection District. The applicant is requesting approval and amendment to a planned industrial development outline development plan for property located at approximately 5250 Oak Street to allow an additional use of the property. The proposed additional use is a public fire station. This case is being processed with a non-specific ODP which establishes permitted land uses and development standards. A future specific ODP will be required with additional public hearings in front of a planning commission and city council. The planning commission recommended approval of this request at a public hearing held on January 21st, 2010. The motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number 02-2010, case number WZ-09-09, a request for approval of an amendment to a planned industrial development outline development plan to allow the additional use of a public fire station on property located at approximately 5250 Oak Street on first reading, published by title in a newspaper and in full on the city's website. Public hearing set for Monday, March 8th, 2010 at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers and that it take effect 15 days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, first reading, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council. Motion carries eight to zero. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item three is Resolution 01-2010. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution 01, 2010, a resolution designating the official public notice location and newspaper of general circulation for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. And since this didn't get run by a study session or anything, I want to read some more information that we have here. Background, the Wheat Ridge Transcript is currently and has long been designated newspaper of general circulation. Many years in the past, the transcript was called the Wheat Ridge Sentinel and was delivered automatically to all Wheat Ridge homes regardless of subscriptions. Today, only paying subscribers receive this paper. In December 2009, Mile High Newspapers reported a total Wheat Ridge Transcript circulation of 2,775. It is unknown whether this amount of the actual Wheat Ridge home subscribers or the total of all subscriptions. The Denver Post is Colorado's and the Denver area's longest-standing major newspaper. In recent years, a section called Your Hub has been included weekly in the Thursday edition of the Denver Post. Your Hub caters to local issues and circulates only to Wheat Ridge and Arvada homes. Currently, there are 4,263 Wheat Ridge home subscribers. Mile High Newspapers, Wheat Ridge Transcript, charges a special rate of .42 per line legal notice publications. Each line will fit approximately 35 to 40 characters. The Denver Post charges a special rate of .40 per line for the publications in the legal section of Your Hub. Each line in this section will fit an average of 75 characters. Considering only the volume of the text and cost per line, the Denver Post Your Hub offers an opportunity to reduce the city's expenses for legal publication by 49.2 percent. The total expenses from the city clerk's budget for legal publications in 2009 was approximately $11,000. The same publication in the Denver Post Year Hub would have saved the city approximately $5,413. Additionally, a legal's publication in the Denver Post Year Hub reaches 88 percent more of the Wheat Ridge homes than the transcript. This combined with the cost savings factor presents a 302 percent increase in the effective use of city money for communicating legal notices to the residents of Wheat Ridge, Colorado.
Normally, we take a motion after the executive summary, but in this case tonight, we're going to allow the papers that are here to speak at the podium under this item before we make a motion. So I would ask that if anybody is here from the hub or from the Wheat Ridge Transcript, please step forward before a motion is made and make any comments you'd like to make about the current situation. And just state your name and spell your last name for the record and your association.
My name is Kate Weber. I'm the director of commercial advertising with the Denver Post and YourHub.com.
Please spell your last name.
Weber, W-E-B-E-R.
Thank you.
Thanks. I believe that the numbers speak for themselves. We would like to serve Wheat Ridge in a way of providing more people with the knowledge of what's happening in terms of the legal notices. We're also very proud to be able to offer you an affordable rate. YourHub.com has been around for over, well, nearly five years now, excuse me, and has been well received by the community because it's very much community-focused. The reason I say it's community-focused is that all of the content is primarily written by the citizens who live here. So I think that speaks to the power behind YourHub.com and the community feel that it has. So I appreciate your consideration.
Please spell your last name for the record.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Scott Perriman. It's P-E-R-R-I-M-A-N. Pardon me. I'm the publisher and owner of Mile High Newspapers and one of those papers is the Wheat Ridge Transcript. And what I'd like to talk about is partnerships and the fact that we are your partner. The Transcript and the city of Wheat Ridge have been partners for a long time, as was alluded to. The part that we're talking about tonight is the business portion of the partnership. And we do charge to publish legal notices. We are a legal newspaper. We're not an insert into another paper. We're an actual standalone legal newspaper. We charge an affordable rate that is set actually by state statute, .42 per line is the state statutory rate on legal notices. But beyond the business partnership, we are your partner in a lot of other ways. You all know Jeff Francis. He's here on a weekly basis. You know, the revenue that we receive from the city helps support having a full-time, knowledgeable, trained reporter who comes and covers your council and covers the people in your city and their activities. Further, you can't go anywhere else and see the level of coverage in, as far as activities, sports, you know, the sports coverage that we provide, the civic coverage that we provide. Another way that we're a partner is that we realize that the circulation is not what we would like it to be either. So with your Economic Development Department, we came up with a program where any revenues that come from the city go back into paid subscriptions for businesses in Wheat Ridge. So if we were to receive a $270 check for a legal publication in the Wheat Ridge Transcript, that turns around and 10 businesses receive a subscription for the year. So this is a strong partnership that we have with you. We'd like to continue that. Our numbers show a little bit different. We show that in 2009 that the expenditure was about $6,400. So, you know, I think that's money well spent. It's returned to your community. The money that comes into our papers is used to support families in Jefferson County, the people that I employ. We live here, we work here, and we are your newspaper and like to continue that partnership that we have with you folks. Glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Ms. Adams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please. I move to designate the Wheat Ridge Transcript as the newspaper of general circulation and the notices for public meetings continue to be posted on the first floor of the Wheat Ridge Municipal Building.
Is there a second? Second. We have a motion for the Transcript, seconded by Councilmember Demott. Discussion on the main motion. Councilmember Berry?
I have a question about the publication rate, the rate that's in statute. Is that the maximum rate that can be charged or a minimum?
Well, that's the rate that is required to be charged. I've got the statute here and I can look and make sure it's...
So for a legal publication, it would have to be the .42 per line?
Yeah, that is...
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Demott?
I think he did mention, sometime last year, we did start all the businesses and Wheat Ridge did start receiving the transcript for free. It does come in the mail and I know there's a lot of businesses that really appreciate it. And I think the businesses appreciate the partnership that we have with the transcript and we appreciate having Jeff here.
Councilmember Adams?
I'd like to speak to my motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I look through the transcript, certainly the publication of the legal notices is critical and it's also critical to our community. In the long run, eventually, as we watch the newspaper industry change and go towards the internet, it's something that we have been looking at. But we did do a citizen survey, and I don't have the date with me, but the last citizen survey we had, our community and Wheat Ridge is not ready to go certainly paperless. So consequently, the tradition of the Wheat Ridge Transcript has been such with the community that this is a place that they look not only for the legals but also for information. The fact that we have a reporter here every week, I don't think at this point in time that we need to make any changes in the process, especially in the middle of the fact that we have been working very closely with small businesses, trying to encourage our small businesses, and this in fact is a small business, a local business. And I would like to support my own motion.
You have a motion for the Wheat Ridge Transcript. Mr. Dow?
I checked the statute. It's the way the statute reads, the rate is not to exceed. Yeah.
They could charge the .42.
That's right, yeah.
Any other comments from council? Discussion. Councilmember Berry?
Well, I think both papers have been valuable to the community. I think Your Hub has done a great job of bringing a lot of the citizen journalists to the community and getting a lot of events out that would normally not get out and a lot of news that would get out. And I've noticed lately that they've had journalists working on stories and creating stories. And so they're doing both, having independent journalists work on stories as well as doing citizens' reports. And it does get, you know, it was also in the Rocky Mountain News too while it was around. So it was in both papers and got to quite a few people. The Transcript does have a journalist writing the stories and I do think that is of some value. I do value citizen journalism, but there are times when it's important to have, I think, an independent journalist writing stories. And I think that a public notice in a paper that subscribes to journalistic standards is important.
Councilmember Sang?
I will be supporting this motion. However, it does concern me that we would have twice as much coverage in the Post to subscribers as we do in the Transcript. That's my main objection, is the fact that there's only, what do they say, 20, 2,400 people that get the Transcript as opposed to double that of the Post. But I agree that I think that we should support people that have been with the city a long time and have actually covered us and are here every week covering us. So I support the motion.
Mr. Demott?
Just one more quick thing. I do want to say that also along with that, although it's double the amount of people, I think 100 percent of the people who purposely subscribe to the Transcript are doing it because they do want to know what's going on in Wheat Ridge. Those people are more likely to be purchasing that paper for the reason of seeing these ordinances printed in here. Your Hub is, it's a great insert and I think a lot of people read it, a lot of people appreciate it, but they're not buying the Post for that where we're purposely buying the Transcript for Wheat Ridge incidental items.
The only comment I wanted to make was that while the Hub is also a good source of information, my concern is that it doesn't reach the 802-12 and 15 zone districts in Wheat Ridge. Those are Eastern Wheat Ridge and those are covered by a Denver Hub. So the 80033 is where the Hub would normally be delivered in Wheat Ridge and they'll see the legal notices there. But the Eastern Wheat Ridge, 802-12, 15, 14, do not receive the Hub whatsoever in the insert. It's the Denver Hub, I believe. And so the Transcript, if they're, like I said earlier, the Transcript is being delivered, they've ordered that no matter where they live in Wheat Ridge to get that information. So I would have to agree that the Transcript probably is the better vehicle right now for the city of Wheat Ridge, although the Hub does lend itself to good information, too. Any other comments before I repoll the council? Please poll the council on the main motion for the Transcript.
Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you.
Very much.
That concludes our agenda for tonight. Move on to city managers' matters.
All right, about that.
Yes, the chief just wanted me to remind city council and our citizens that we will have a test of our early warning siren system this Wednesday, February 10th, at 1:00 PM. And again, for those, basically along the Clear Creek corridor, don't be alarmed, there'll be a test at 1:00 PM of the early warning siren system. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing, thank you.
City clerks' matters?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Reinhardt?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilmember Stites?
Yeah, I got some. First off, I would like to move to set a study session of the council for 6:00 PM on Monday, February 22nd, 2010, in the council chambers for the purpose of a Cabela's Project update.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for a special study session on February 22nd, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion? Please poll the council. Motion carries eight to zero.
Secondly, I mentioned last time, now would be an excellent time to relocate your business to Wheat Ridge, relocate your family to Wheat Ridge. I think we have some affordable buildings here that we can work with you on. So if you're thinking at all about relocating your business or moving to Wheat Ridge, please let staff know and we'll help you out as much as we can. Third thing is please... Third thing is, please try to do a positive thing for the community, whether as of, you know, tonight, since it's snow, maybe you might want to help your neighbors shovel their walk driveway tomorrow. Do something for your family that's positive. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheatridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay? Councilmember Langworthy?
Yes, I'd just like to make a quick comment that wasn't brought up today, but the Optimist Clubs have done a, oh, now I can't, Respect for Law Award, I'm sorry. And this year, we gave that award to Wade Hammond, who is a member of the Wheatridge Police, and he was honored on Thursday night, I believe. And I just want to say thank you to Wade because they recognized all the work he had done for Wheatridge, especially along the eastern end of the community, and trying to get, you know, code enforcement back under control and helping with the people. So just want to thank Wade.
Councilmember Demott?
I just wanted to say the mayor, and I sent out some letters to some local businesses this week regarding snow removal. We just want to remind you to be proactive and get out and shovel some snow off the sidewalks. If your, some of your employees can do it, help out on their time off, or if your landlord's not taking care of it, be proactive and neighborly and try to get the snow removed, especially in the shady areas. Thanks.
The shady areas of town?
Yes. Not the shady areas, the parts of town that don't get the sunlight, the side of your building.
North-facing. Councilmember Adams?
I have nothing tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Sang?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Berry?
Yes, we have a vacancy on the planning commission due to Mr. Reinhardt's election, so I would like to make a motion that we appoint Alan Bucknam to fill the remainder of Mr. Reinhardt's term.
We have a motion for Alan Buckman for the planning commission for District One, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. To discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
I would also like us to fill a alternate position for the Denver Regional Council of Governments. There's going to be some committees coming up with Dr. Cog that are important. One is a committee to determine the criteria for what gets put on the Transportation Improvement Plan, and that's kind of one of the most important elements of Dr. Cog. It determines where federal transportation dollars go. That will take a lot of time, so it will be good to have an alternate. Councilmember Jay has expressed interest in participating in Dr. Cog, and she's attended several of the meetings, including the marathon meeting on the Parkway, the Northwest Parkway here that lasted till about 10:00 PM. So I would like to make a motion that we appoint Joyce Jay as the alternate to the Denver Regional Council of Government.
Second.
You have a motion to appoint Joyce Jay as a Dr. Cog alternate, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Mr. Stites?
Yeah, just as a prerequisite, I would like Joyce Jay to get some money for 32nd and I-70.
I'm not even there yet. I hear you, Mike.
Any more discussion on the motion? Please poll the council. For Councilmember Jay?
Do I vote for that?
Yes, you vote.
Motion carries eight to zero.
I would also, yeah, I would also like to thank Larry Schultz, the treasurer, and also, he also served on Dr. Cog as the main member and as the alternate for several, and has sat on several very important transportation committees and has done a great job. The one thing that I've learned in Dr. Cog is when I think I understand transportation funding, they change the formula, and Larry's been instrumental in helping me and others understand the myriad of transportation funding and how it relates to air quality and regional planning. So I want to thank Larry for all his hard work and help at Dr. Cog.
Any other comments? We're adjourned.